It's just me and you. All right, folks, they're recording, starting, I'm gonna come back and start recording minutes in a couple of minutes, I just have to work in them.
Okay.
And it's a minute. Anything's really loud.
That's what it's like.
We get there, handler. We turn it off, we all die. That's the only problem.
All right.
I mean, do I need to yell or wild?
No, it doesn't pick up on them.
Oh, that doesn't, okay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh, do you wanna join us for this committee meeting?
Yeah.
So we have a forum here. Master Barlow.
It's getting more of a boost.
How. Will they get quieter? The pop's a little bit.
Did you guys have a little break in between that? In the same meeting?
Nope.
You had enough coffee, you're good? Okay.
Um, I don't think we're. Especially anybody else. So I think Mike's the other. I tend to, it's the other council person. Is he still off in me? He was at one point. We had a lot of shift. Okay. Anyways, um, we'll call this meeting to order, uh, this is a planning committee meeting of city council. Day is October twenty fourth, it's two thirty P M. We're joined with council member Kavanaugh and Steve Carson from planning and housing department and Dr. Burling. Director of planning. Um, so we got two items and I think I want to change the order. Of how they are on the agenda, I think the. Resolution to authorize mayor to enter into agreement with the Chris Thursday's. Chrisless research and construction group, I wanna do that first. If that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think I'm. Pretty familiar with this cuz you had introduced it earlier this year. But if you wanna do an overview.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Great.
Uh, we are required as part of our con plan to have an analysis impediments to fair housing, essentially that's review of city policy and procedure. As well as the nature of housing, bear housing in the community. Um, I was incorrect and I was trying to push it through at the last minute and I do apologize beginning of this year. Uh, I thought fifty was our con plan, fifty one was our con plan, so. Now we have, so we canceled that with them. Um, we didn't go anywhere with that, so we wanted to, we wanted to do it right, we wanted to make sure no one felt rushed who was gonna bid. Um, to give them a lot more time, so, um, essentially this was a redo. Uh, we rebid it, uh, one of the applicants did rebid as well and we've got two additional bids. Uh, one agency, community and policy advisors out of Oceanside, California, and another one R K G associates out of Alexandria, Virginia. Um, I did not do any proactive, uh, reach out, uh, to anyone, uh, including the previous bidders. Um, so once we got the bids in, I unfortunately I don't have the dates, I do apologize, but we gave several weeks time for agencies to apply. Um, we got three applicant, we got three applications, we had a meeting within a week, uh, consisting of myself. Dr. Burling and Jeffrey Wood, our housing specialist to review. We reviewed the applications, um, essentially Chrisless was kind of in the middle or maybe upper middle. Uh, the agency out of Oceanside was the lowest bidder, uh, but they had very, very little experience, no experience, smaller analysis impediment spare housing, they had done like. The state of Wyoming or something like that. Um, and they had very small staff, uh, the other agency, R K G associates out of Alexandria. Bid almost, uh, eight thousand more than Chrisless, uh, they do have a lot of experience actually more than Chrisless, but we noticed. Number one, they were the highest, but also it was obvious from their bid, this was a boilerplate. Because they left in things like referring to us as a different city and referring to New York State as North Carolina, so obviously they have just used this boilerplate before. They didn't check it very well, highest bidder, so Chrisless actually bid lower than they did in the spring. Uh, so they dropped it down to twenty five five as opposed to twenty seven five earlier this year. Uh, they do have past experience with the city cuz they helped us with our, um, home A R P plan. Um, and they have experience doing several announcement and spare housing, including cities, uh, in New York State. So between the three, we went with them or we would like to go with them.
Got you, uh, thank you. I. Don't have a lot of. Questions for you, I think I. Have had them answered before.
Hmm.
Um, but we. We just have to do this to get the check mark off with HUD and. But essentially it.
Yeah, but it is, I mean, it is a useful tool.
Right, right.
Um, they are going to, and we checked with them, they are going to do calls where they do the, um. The test calls to see if landlords are actually following fair housing rules. Um, they do plan on meeting with, uh, constituents, um, having local meetings. Um, they. The greatest thing that now said impediments fair housing, just in general, no matter who we pick. Uh, the greatest thing it does indicate whether what weaknesses we have in the city and how we can even change local code. Uh, or the charter, uh, to help strengthen fair housing rules, it helps us improve our, our local HUD programs, it helps us figure out, um. Things we can put in agreements with some of our, um, sub recipients, uh, that deal with housing to make sure that they're following fair housing rules, so. It's, it is, yes, you are correct, it is a checkmark, but I, I'd hate for us to think that it, that's just the only reason we're doing it. Uh, it does absolutely have to be done, but it is, it is extremely useful and once I have it, I will present a copy to city council.
Great.
I wouldn't guess that the actual impediments. Maybe to fair housing had changed significantly, it seemed like we have a lot of built in impediments, we have a lot of continual. Senior issues, a lot of the discrimination issues like that, it was just habitual. So even if those main are continue to be the main. Problem, right, they're. Very difficult to address and, and castrate. Uh, it would be nice. If we could get out of this at least some small action steps.
Okay.
That.
That's usually provided.
That is usually there's the guideline.
Council could take something that, that's, that's. You know, at least something.
Um, our previous one kinda got a little screwy, but the one from. So did have actionable items in it, uh, some of those were followed up, I don't believe they were all followed up. Um, I can tell you the, the, the basic nuts and bolts that we learned from it was the biggest discriminatory factor is generally disabled. Uh, the second biggest factor are generally people not understanding. Um, the, the discriminate, you can't. You can sort of discriminate for students and against students. But you can't then extend that to children and that's it, that, that was, they, they ran into that several times and people would say, this is student housing, well, I'm a grad student. And here are my kids and then we go, no kids, oh, that's fair housing violation. And then the third one obviously is the, the much more common, we typically think of, uh, racial ethnic discrimination, so that does occur. Um, but it was, I believe, third on the list of, of sort of discriminations they saw. Um, they did have some actionable items, I believe we acted on, but again. That was a ten year old one, at this point, things may have changed, hopefully. For the better, and then we can say, okay, what can we do to make things even, even more equitable for everyone?
So it seems like, uh, that they're, these folks are based out of, uh, Atlanta.
Atlantic, yeah.
It seems like their, their project, uh. Highlight that they highlighted, they probably kind of mostly been. In the south, in New Jersey, it's a, but these, these HUD, uh. HUD, uh. Requires report our nation why.
Each, each, each entitlement community getting HUD funding.
They're coming in on budget for this, I mean, they're gonna have us doing some traveling and things to get up here and.
That's their total, including.
Yeah, that does include the travel times.
Sounds.
I think, yeah, I, and I kinda like the. Like getting a sample to see where we're at every few years to see how, uh. The dynamic is changing, um, so I'm excited to see the results of this, I think it's. It's probably a decent practice to change, um, who you're contracting with and see if they are. Their procedures are different, um, and how they're collecting information and. Other analysis might help us, but I, yeah, I. I'm eager to, to see results and take actionable steps to try to address problems.
Excellent.
I don't really have any. More issues, I think we've been through this. Back and forth a few times.
Well, now we have breathing time, so we, we can, we don't have to not push it on to get rushed through because I'm thinking it's gotta be done in two months.
Yeah. So I, I'm comfortable moving on. Are you, you also?
I think so.
Okay.
Excellent.
And they came in hundred. With the last.
Under what they originally was, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand, the original was twenty seven five and this time is twenty five five.
The last project they did for us, so they were under budget, half budget.
They were at budget, I think it was the home A R P. Yep, which was done really well, it was approved by, uh, HUD and we're, uh, beginning to act upon that.
That's a good chat, right?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carson. Appreciate it.
Stay.
You're in this, okay, if you wanna hang out for a time and actually plan discussion, you're welcome to, but I'm not gonna. Steal your time.
When this move fourteen.
Well, yeah, maybe, can they hear me?
Oh, yeah, it, it picks up everything, um, so the next item is the request for legislation twenty four. Yeah.
What's the next step with the, um, the Christmas founder, does it go back to council?
It'll go, it can go to a business meeting. Yeah.
Would we be able to get that expedited now? Or that, that'd be too difficult at this point?
We can't expedite from. I think we could just sign it out. And then it would land.
Yeah.
Oh, so it could get approved at the next business meeting? Or would it need another like business meeting discussion followed by the next?
No, no, I think we could get it. Is this is the equivalent of.
A work, a work session, yeah.
Oh.
So we just need to get signed out from here and it will be on a business meeting for. We catch your names.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
I think. Yeah, it's, this has essentially been discussed in. In the, in front, in front of the whole council before, I don't think it's. I don't think it should be on familiar territories.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. This is terrible. Most around the city, wifi.
I like that four bars, thanks. Remember.
Thanks, November sixth. It's nice to see you, okay.
So. You have the request for legislation twenty four dash two oh eight, uh, the resolution adopting the twenty twenty four climate action plan. This is another one that's. Around again and again. But, um. I know we spent a lot of time in this on council, I know that you brought this to the planning. Committee and. Know the planning commission. And you had to present there and then. The environmental commission is reviewing it, are there any other agencies that you've brought forward? This plan to.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, did you get feedback back from environmental commission? Obviously, back and forth.
Think that's what they're working on.
I did some unofficial comments received. Uh, one of them. I added a, uh. Time running into the goals, so I did update this to, sorry. Being, I cleaned it up. When we got it from the contractors, they had just run out of. I think. So I finally got, uh, go the acrobat. Pro, so I could modify it, so I could tear rid of the typos. And the only thing I added was in section five under the goals and actions. I did a, um, implementation timeframe. I kept it very simple, I just said, um. Some page five, page one. Uh. A short term goal was, you know, will be completed within two years. There are the two years, medium was three to four years and long term was five years and beyond, and then in each, um, action, they indicated for the short, medium. Just to be a little more, uh. And a little. Yeah.
Grounding and.
Kind of prior. Okay. So those are the only things made.
Okay. Um. I think. Maybe you've answered this before or in a different way, but is there. Any requirement for like new public works projects to that to like reference? This and like be aligned with the goals. Um, I'm thinking specific, so it's like right now, we're talking about doing the, the main street corridor, um. Redevelopment, not, not redevelopment, but it's a, we're redoing that whole road. Um, and I, I don't know if there's any consideration for like bike lanes, yeah, I know there's, uh, they, a lot of talk about walkability, which is great. But.
They. I don't know about follow the requirement.
Right.
But they thought, uh, engineering department worked too closely with us, we're, we're pursuing a smart growth, um. Plan for the city.
Uh huh.
And I know we've added a smart growth into our. Chapter four ten. And quite a lot of that involves. You know, altering those transportation. So they do have to comply with, um, our code, um. One of my yes. But engineering has already reached out to me about this, they wanna see what it is when this passed it.
Okay.
And D P W is gonna be looking on some of the goals and actions as well. So I did speak with those departments as we're developing them. So you just, you don't wanna.
No, I have an academic background in climate change.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, that's.
Actually, I had to read it, so. Didn't I tell you? Well. We don't really have anything that compels them, there's no code that says you have to follow this. But. As a plan, you know, to address issues citywide. Each family was involved. It was all.
Yeah, I was like, I was doing some research about. Budgeting and different like approaches to budgeting and how like every department can like align their budget with like a city priority and then I'm thinking like if there's. If we're like to take this as seriously as possible, uh. I think every department has to like. Say like what their role is within the climate action plan. Um, I don't think it should just be on planning and I know you're gonna be coordinating with, with engineering and D P W, but there should be.
That's the main departments impacted, but we're also working on purchasing, um. With both of them, I mean, just. Materials management, uh, so page five dash five. We're gonna work with purchasing, I want to, um. Have. I don't wanna see how it's phrased. Oh, green and precarious by twenty thirty five. So we have to work with the purchasing department to incorporate the New York State executive orders, zero twenty two. Our purchases and leases. You know, we're practical, though, we made from the, oh, New York State O G S green purchasing site. It's got it all pulled together and all the costs have already been bid. So those are, you have the best price for the state. That meets the goals they have. So that's something we're gonna be purchasing, um, finance department, D P W, um, materials management, hopefully campus and food waste is one of the. Actions we have, um. Engineering and planning roads, improvement. So it's kind of built in. The departments, but. I think that would be great. We can have a bunch of minds.
Right. Councilmember, do you have any? Thoughts, just nothing this time.
Jumps, there's some, uh. Different things for different. Departments to do. Some policy changes, uh. You know, I mean. I recall that we, a lot of the. Actual net reduction had more to do with. Changes in the state grid and stuff and what we've necessarily done as a city.
Well, a good percentage of it was, but we did still show. Without the changes, cuz we had it shown separately, you know, right? That the city had achieved the stated goal from twenty eleven without, uh, state.
That what we say is that.
So.
So we did make some progress.
Yeah. That. At least. In section four. No, they're do that.
There's a recommendation here. Or at least. Possibly to, to purchase real energy, certainly we've done. In the past, I believe, going.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder, um. Something that's come up, I've been talking with, uh. Looking more positive electricity in South City has been, uh. Getting the city signed up on, uh, so.
Okay.
I guess somebody ever came up in terms of the. Action plans.
Um, we did have a couple of programs in place already, we couldn't. But so they're not, uh, it's not through us, it's through the county. Um, so it'll be redundant, but, you know, we can add in your population to the county. Even further, maybe so.
Well, it's, so this is, I mean, I, um. They. You know, just the billing thing almost, they, they, you know. They promote. Nice thing for.
Yeah.
Next sort of answer program to help people. Connecting. Homeowners and businesses and apparently municipalities with, uh, with, uh. We saw that actually so that you get the credits back on the bills or. Being engaged in this.
We'll get as much money back as we're paying.
I mean.
You know, like, nice, I feel. Buy it back at wholesale rates, which is not what you pay, when you pay for their energy. But I don't think that's quite fair.
Something's been.
But like, I answer, I don't need to like. Joe.
No.
Mine.
No.
So, you know, with the comprehensive plan, we, we have. In the action item section, we have sections of like who's responsible with responsibility. We really spell it out, which department is, you know, involved in that action, and then we also give estimates of, um, we have a funding. Potential brands available that. I didn't add that into this. Um, the grants change and everything's changing. So rapidly in climate action funding, um. That I didn't add the, the granting opportunities available.
Hmm.
Um, this will be different tomorrow. So those are the, the two main differences. You know, cap plans are a lot of reviews. This is like the policy guidance, here's what we wanna do to achieve new stores, and here's how we can do them. And then the rest is left to what's best available. Um. So one of the things that we're doing is, um, you know, one of the. Clean energy community award in, is that twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? Yeah, and, um. Round three is open now, that was for two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. That we, you know, created a program to help. Residential commercial businesses. Homes become more energy. Um, to conserve energy, use less energy and use energy with the amount of solar, so that was really effective, um, we have a. I'm trying to remember how many, we had ten commercial projects and. I think we ended up with thirty six overall, so twenty six residential. Ten commercial. And round three is open now, so we've been going through this big. Since spreadsheet, uh, it's got, it's with all the different. Actions and if you have achieved them, then you earn points. The number of points go towards identifying how much money you can be awarded. And then you have to write the program for that money, but you won't even be eligible until you show you've already achieved a lot. So we're currently going through that, um. We're. At about thirty five hundred points, definitely. But I've already certified, um, three days, so that, I mean. Like four or five more, that would add another two thousand points, if we can get all these done. Um. So we're looking right now, it's certified about a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, um. We get a, uh. Those. Not just, uh. Disadvantaged community, this, only just a bonus, but we get an increase, so we could possibly get up to three hundred thousand from already certified actions. If we complete these, it'll go up. Uh, to the next level, so in terms of funding, these activities.
Competition is there for this award, it's.
There is a huge pool available for everybody in the state of New York, and there's a dashboard that shows how much is remaining. So there's a good amount remaining, so we're gonna get a lot of this done, but we already have a lot served, but improved, so. Um, so I wanted to just kind of, you can, I know funding is a big issue. A lot of the things we're doing in here is a change of practice and policy, but some of it really. Will take additional funds, so this one is, um. If you look at. Section five, we start talking about the goals.
Yeah.
This, we haven't completed yet, this is goal one, the benchmarking. So in the. You know, your community, there's, um. This is what I wanted to add into. And it basically. To give us eighteen hundred points and it's a resolution, we'll take it to city council. Establishing benchmarking. You know, it's.
Awesome, what's benchmark?
Yeah. You know, and that was one of the comments I know we received earlier was, um. You know, the last greenhouse gas inventory was done in two thousand and six. And then we did one in twenty twenty three with nothing in between. So this would. You resolve. That's.
All right, so we, we got this policy and how do we? Do it?
Well, then we have to create the. We present, yeah. Then we use some of that money, the money that were awarded would go to anything that.
So. Passing the resolution to, with the intent to create the program.
Yes.
Gives them the.
Eighteen hundred points, the bumps of stuff, and they can.
To get us the money to actually implement it.
Yeah, that's interesting. And then there's a grant available for. That's, that's not even us, that's state. But then there's a grant available for, um, recycling. Good scraps. So we could fund that, I think that was.
Setting for the second harvest and working with.
Uh, what?
Does it include second harvest and working with child?
No. They would, I mean, we don't have a plan yet, so yes, if you'd like it.
We can work with, we could work with child with the, and possibly even use C B G.
Local public authorities, local.
This sweet scrap, okay, all right. Post concern, okay.
I'm assuming that they don't have any ways to.
So we have the, uh, we have the. Compost bins, the stuff, right, so we have.
Well, forget it.
We have some sort of.
We think our basically got them, so this is something we've been talking about for a while. Being, um, building out a food waste. Compost collection, either from commercial or residential, of both. And I managed them when I finished the university and all of our schools, so I know how to do them. You know, it'd be best for us, we started, I think, yes, the downtown business district, the restaurants. See where the difficulties are, you know, right, that pilot project. And then branch it out. I know a lot of residents would be very interested in it, cuz, um, the blue bags are great at getting people to recycle. So if you recycle compost, um, you just have a very small number of those are the trash and those bags, so that's. So I know it'll be popular, but it's. The difficulty is when you don't have control over what goes in.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a lot of education on the field, but that's how we would find meeting, you know, uh, the. What is section for composting? The section three. And then section three goes, um, this one we get credit for, I just have to give them.
There's cities that mandate like businesses to compost.
Yeah. Yeah. It saves them, and, and that's the best way to get a program through and get it approved, just what you do to like, uh. They stream analysis and show them that this is saving money. You want, it reduces ticket fees. You know. Cuz we don't charge for yard waste.
And. Actually ignorant, what happens to the yard waste?
It goes to the, um, the, the, and, um. It's really interesting if you have to have uh windows like this that are um machine managed. And then everything gets shredded and then it gets rolled out into the red windows and then they are hair rated. Manually, um and at the end of the process, you know, they have the completed compost and you can go pick it up for free. So it takes in a bigger setting like that, it doesn't take long to break down. So it goes through like.
And is the county at all interested in expanding to?
County asked me when I was working at the university. Um, ten years ago, if we would pilot a program with them. And I let them monitor our program, but we never pursued it.
So what physically happens if it's mapped at the university and at Lawrence?
Okay, like the university comes from all the dining halls and it's um. But post consumer, so the trays and the. Cafeterias or the banks all go back to the kitchen, so it's really neat and easy. So the kitchen staff just separates out recyclables and then puts all of compost in a bin, which is picked up daily. And there there's a uh care of the warranty, I think, is where the compost facility is. That's a farm site, um so we paid an individual to call it and.
We bought a thing to city school district, they're like cafeterias, is that another, yeah.
Well, the issue we had on campuses on the compost collection, we send the um like the food court. Then we we had a have a student actually stand there and say, that's garbage. Because if it's not monitored, so the issue with the home composting uh started with a small collection and. So they're already put in there. Like you had others, and you put a label on top of it saying what does it do? And that and they have it sealed, but it has to be picked up in more than recycling. Recycling is just once a week, I read this once a week, compost um. You know.
Can pile up quickly.
Yeah.
I know this is someone who composts at home, your your compost bucket, whatever you will fill up quickly.
But it smells bad when you put that, it's been sitting too long, so you know, that will be in annual expense to the city, just having a more frequent pickup. But other communities have figured out how to do it, so it's sealed from now. And a lot of the material from campus, actually, we ended up, but it went to pig farms. So there's like a, that's what we did, the Lord's material that we collected, just from the food waste and hospital waste, going to those um big farms. So it was kind of internally processed and became extremely qualified, well, uh high quality for laser, you know, that's the older, but um. And then that was given to uh local.
What was that guy's name of the the pig farms, I can mention before.
I had to report. And at home, my home office. But we want to work with the most good, if you get a hospital to compost and not reach any of the violent, you know, the coast.
Fire has a misplace.
Yeah. Maybe did not. But so and so that's, you know, would help to find a program that. I've always been really interested in. This one would give us credit, would give us points towards our, we use it, we have renewable energy credits, so that hasn't been certified yet. This is one that I'm working with my server to get it through before, this is our rehab program. So it's referred to as a community campaign, but the full description of it. Yeah, it helps. Community become more energy efficient, and with our energy efficiency programs through the C D B G, we don't use them.
We could use, are you saying just residential rehab?
Yeah, no, 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 for the energy efficiency part of it.
Oh, yeah, that's all C D B G.
Yeah. Um, so we go, we take an application from low modern income homes. We started this program in January. Um, for energy efficiency upgrade requests, furnaces, water heaters, appliances. We're also doing windows, I think.
No, just appliances, because once you start taking the windows out, it becomes a difficult thing.
So we're already doing this, so I I want to see if they'll accept our version of helping the community to be more energy efficient. And give us credit for it, so I'm working with them on that. Because we've done what fifteen?
We've got a ton.
Yeah, since um January.
And that's saving on, that's saving on their energy bills, uh it's saving on greenhouse gas emissions ultimately. Uh, especially people that have like the furnaces or boilers going out.
Some of.
Get them taken care of right before the, you know, so that they're they're gonna be warm in the winter.
So all they have baked like, I'm not excited, you know, it's like from the forties, furnaces are being replaced, we should be in the museum.
Yeah.
But there's one that was this beautiful shade of wood. And so I'm working with them on that, and then this is something we can get certified, but it's gonna take a.
It's a plate management.
Like, yeah.
Yeah. This is plate management and we have, you know, from the greenhouse gas inventory, we have. A list of all the vehicles the city has, what department staff own, all the information that it now has to be transferred. Into their program, so that we haven't quite finished yet, I'm interested, which you guys need to let us have in terms of. But that's another.
It's not, I don't think it's us as the barrier to entrance.
Well, I'm pushing that, I mean.
Uh, yeah, and then that's that's kind of, I think, what I, one of the things I was gonna ask, I overheard in the last meeting was like. I feel like it could be one of somebody's full time job, just trying to continue to push for this whole plan and making sure.
Every semester, because introduced, the university have worked with me in geography department, they they got a whole application process, and they got like the best. To who's to entry last.
So if the new electric thing was you bought, is that the interest plan?
Yeah.
Points toward this.
Yeah, yeah, those have already been certified, the electric vehicles, the charging stations, um.
What about our fuel tracking program and stuff that we have it? That works to rush.
That, uh, I don't know if it's part of the fleet management, it could be part of the fleet management.
You have nice cascade, yeah.
And then this one, I thought you guys would be really interested, it's green financing. So I haven't gotten, I haven't contacted the company that runs it, that's what I stepped down, keep going, I wanted. I need approval to do that, but this um, the green financing is run through, it's called C PACE. Let's see, so New York State Property says clean energy, um. It allows municipalities, we pass a little the law, we sign an agreement with the Energy Improvement Corporation. And it's a local development corporation, so I'm just reading. Um, established specifically that this municipalities and property owners achieve energy savings in green energy law. So they they fund, so they make this financing available um. To residents and community, and we manage in partnership about it. So I'm looking more into that, that's what we need, and people can't afford to replace their prices with people's. How much, those, we were estimating the cost of those.
Yeah, then.
Yeah, taking out the old one, putting in the new one, it was like ten, twenty thousand. That we didn't, so in our program, we're just doing alley efficient, so we're not doing heat process, and we wouldn't have enough money. Anyway, so this provides financing for people to do these projects and make their own sufficient, and it's um. I read, I went to the website, I read about it, I think it's nice, you know, so this is something I want to do and get points for it, but it would also just say. People that are more. Or to reduce their energy consumption.
Right, I I know, like the. There's a huge energy savings when you get get a heat pump and psycho. Be interesting if like nice like would, I think it's like counterintuitive, if they did like some. Extremely low interest financing to help that installation, or if there was some program to do that.
I know they give rebates for it.
Right.
Apparently you don't have to take out the old ones to keep it as backup. I haven't got me to.
Yeah, I I I think I keep thinking about that, right, but but. Places only have one furnace, and we're okay with that, but for some reason we're. They're skeptical of running just to keep.
Yeah. That is.
And it's not like your gas furnace works when your electric goes up, because it doesn't, you have a blower, so. They're not getting any more done, so that.
I just don't know if they would keep houses as warnings.
And that was, I think that was a legitimate concern, that some of the newer ones now that they've seared them, and they're flaming their built for, you know, can handle Canada, so.
So these are the, some of the financing, you know, if we can get all of these approved, you can replace and move the eligible person, good amount of, more than three hundred thousand.
What's the um? Final.
Sweet better.
Alright, this is an open thing and they.
Right, so, well, we were already certified for a number of them, I could submit, you know, what we're gonna do with the money. That point, but I want to get more.
This is stuff that can be, I I mean, we just learned that there's, we have this the contract with.
Simmons?
Grant writer.
Oh, right.
Whatever.
Yeah. What are the things?
Syracuse. I don't even know.
Why is?
But can they help with any of this, is? Or is it kind of really specific to you?
That is what they'll do is email and ask me to get the more information. That's the type of sending parts.
Right, so how much?
Yeah, but what's great is when you pull all of it together, you say, here, you know, and then somebody else writes and submits and it doesn't have like. These are very simple certifications, it tells you what documentation you have to provide, you send it to my server, they say yes, we're done, it's just kind of.
So if the stuff that you've already submitted and certified for, that's money people get, it's not like.
I haven't, we haven't once.
We're gonna do everything and then pull the trigger, so.
You don't pull a trigger on everyone, so once you're certified for projects, it establishes how much you can then. Um, write a program for, and as long as the money's there and they improve the program, we can get the money. So this is like the first step, so we have right now probably close to three hundred thousand that we could write up a program for, which would support you in this. Send it to them and then go. And then they have this whole, you have to submit all of these progress reports before they send you money, it's very crucial. And you pay for it and then they reimburse, so it's.
Is this, so if we, if we adopted this today, um is there still the opportunity to? Go back and make a amendment to it?
Like with anything.
So we could be like, well, I don't think this goal was um quite ambitious enough and we need to.
Well, when we went through the planning commission, honestly, uh one member or two was concerned with the team's proposed to. Transmutation, so that was.
That's lost.
I had it.
What page did you go to?
Um, page five dash four, so I I reduce some of the musts to that out.
Oh.
Like that the language. But only one person.
Was it about parking?
It was about parking, driving, um. Reduced vehicle access. Identifying, when I identify areas, reduce parking requirement opportunities, we're already doing, you know, some of these.
You know, I just, I saw this one about the change, the changing building zoning or. Change.
Yeah, so a lot of. You know, that was like that, what you were just looking at was looking at the task from twenty eleven. And identifying where it was stood, but we completed in it, that's um. This bit here, so it's an ongoing, you know, we're still. Going through and completing stuff and working out stuff, it's like you're changing. And that changes in sort of.
Evolving.
Yeah. Um.
So there, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, any plan can be. As long as it doesn't. Reduce the ability to achieve a lot, so this is going in the right direction.
Correct. Uh, I think, what about the public engagement aspect, because I feel like we are. Maybe this is outlined and I need to reread it, um but it's. If if this is primarily, this isn't like only. The city doing city infrastructure.
Oh, it's it's city, it's municipal and community, and we did have a. You know, we have a free engagement plan, we followed, we had at least two public meetings, we had a public comment, pop up. Um, pop up presentations with. At the, what was the trucks on the tracks? There, um, the farmers market on Collier Street, but I think. You know, the next step would be to have a public meeting, public hearing.
Mm hmm.
Open to the, you know, everyone to come and review this account.
Once it's adopted or before it's adopted?
Before.
Okay, so I mean, it's like my free engagement beyond just looking at that, other ways we can be. Actually engaged maybe in climate action results. Very small ways, I was talking. Anyway, uh, we're talking about the timeline in which trees were planted in uh most of the Noma neighborhood, which is now coming up, I think a lot of the trees planted like five, six years ago. And like great time to bring the citizen pruner program in. Right out of the Noma Community Center in like.
The citizen pruner?
Yeah, some of these trees are now getting to the point where they should be pruned, but they're small enough that it's still mostly reachable level. So.
That's because the shade tree coming here and then.
Yeah, it's been funked for, the dinner program has been offline for quite a lot, so, but I think there'd be a great. Little targeted restart of it.
I would be.
Yeah, and then I think like so much of this is just like. Education, like continued education, like the, just like thinking about the education and like. I don't want to say lifestyle changes, but it's just like ha- habit changes for people to like adopt to that type of a. A shift in their daily routines, like that's, that's a huge push in just one, one little aspect and then.
Well, it helps really is. The guilt aspect doesn't. Yeah, it doesn't, when you go, you shouldn't be doing that, you should not think any stuff, but incentives work. Um, showing cost reductions through composting is very effective. Doing a waste stream analysis for a building and showing if you recycle compost, this is all you throw away and your trash bill is way down.
Uh, tenants, houses where we sometimes in past years include utilities and consider paying their own utilities and. Going over to do something or have a shower against somebody, it is pitch black, there is no way you can, nope, they're gonna bang their owner, the lights off, it's seriously, it's turning that.
That one is included, the opposite. Anyway, so there's, there's our plan. There's a big. Our webpage. Is going, putting a lot of information out, we have a bunch of that, that's gonna be like the fourth, or you know, climate action. Measures, projects, um, and resiliency as well, so that you're gonna need to hire something, okay. That's one of the next one of the things I need an intern about, and I have all this stuff pulled together, we have to put it in format and get it up.
Well, but seriously, would it like make sense to have a full time person that was just like plugging away at this?
We had an environmental planner.
Yeah.
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah, when I started, she left and she resigned after a year or two.
Um, I can see her face.
Yeah, I've seen her not too long ago.
Yeah, and then that position was converted into a planner position, and then that manager position is open. So we hadn't had an environmental planner, although our city planner Tim, he was from environmental programs. So he acted as our environment, as well, the city. As well, a city, but definitely we need another. A sustainability coordinator as. Environmental player, somebody, you know, would be great. Yeah, we both have a background, this, this my bachelor's and. And I'm sustaining planning and sustainability. But. We need another person.
Yeah. Because I, you know, just like.
Yeah.
Doing this in addition to like managing and whatever else you're working on, uh.
So we have a Tito does, you know, planning and zoning committees and. We do housing and community development and. And I mean. But. Yeah, if you look at the case from funding, the university has a really good program. I don't know if it's good or bad, but I teach a lot of the environment classes, so I can tell. Who looks good.
Right.
Uh, took a P, right, P never? Okay.
He retired.
He was a graduation.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
He's um, he enjoys it all the way up.
Good for him.
Yeah, his office is right across from my main classroom. Okay.
That's unfortunate, he retired, but good for him. Brilliant man, he was on my thesis.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think I, I think I'm all set with uh reviewing this for now, I think we'll. See if there's any other. Well, I think we're gonna wait for the input from the environmental commission. Just had a meeting about it. Sure they're gonna get feedback.
For my support comments on the image. Greenhouse gas image.
She can't really, it's only five. But. We'll see what they come back with, I, I don't. I think this is, I don't, like, this isn't a starting. Point.
No, it is a start.
It is a starting point, but it's more than that. I don't want to act like it's a. No, this, this, what you have written a plan, I don't want to say that.
Stayed from the twenty eleven, so we were building from the success, because that was good.
Right.
That was our game plan. And we had it in all session of action, I was for resiliency, which. Wasn't in it before, was needed now. Alright, well.
Thank you, and this is, I mean.
Yeah.
Sounds like great program to be chipping away.
We're gonna, you know. We're still working on these goals. We're not stopping everything until it's adapted.
Oh, sure.
I don't think that's a bad thing.
Right.
So and and I don't think, like, if you change any of the goals or change anything, it would make it more restrictive, not less, right? So I don't think that by going through with this and. You know, getting additional money for um. Green infrastructure would be negative. And anything. Besides, it all has to go through the county anyway. Right, city council?
Absolutely.
Only a five.
You have any other thoughts you want?
Not at the moment.
Alright, I am. During this meeting.
Alright, thank you both, we're again.
I know.
Oh, it's with.
Good to talk to you.
Hey, how are you?
Very good.
And I'm like, you can't keep these uh.